Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our meeting of our Fillmore City Council. Thank you very much. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask Mayor Protem Albert Mendez to lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you very much. We'll now have a roll call.
Councilmember Brogie. Mayor Protem Mendez. Mayor Villasenor.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Garnica.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Glad we're all here. And our next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And I'll entertain a motion. First, have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Brogie. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. Our agenda is approved. And our next order of business is our presentation for this evening, where we will be proclaiming September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and encouraging community-wide participation and suicide prevention efforts. And I do have a speaker who is here, Maya Zumaya. So I will invite her up. And I'll actually come down. And if we have a mic, I'd like to come down and read the proclamation to her. And Lou, I have a few minutes to speak afterwards. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Allie. Okay, so again, so this proclamation is proclaiming September 25 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and encouraging community-wide participation and suicide prevention efforts. Whereas, suicide is a serious and preventable public health issue that affects individuals, families, and communities across Ventura County and the nation. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide is one of the leading causes of death in the United States. And each life loss represents a profound tragedy for loved ones and for the community. And whereas, raising awareness, reducing stigma, and educating the public on warning signs and intervention strategies are critical to preventing suicide and promoting mental health and well-being. And whereas, Ventura County Behavioral Health, through funding provided by the Mental Health Services Act, MHSA, is supporting community-based suicide prevention by making evidence-based trainings available at no cost to the public. And whereas, MZ Independent Consulting is proud to partner in these efforts by encouraging all community members to take a free suicide prevention training, such as QPR, or Question, Persuade, Refer, or Living Works Safe Talk, to learn how to recognize the signs of suicide and confidently take action to save lives. And whereas, Suicide Prevention Month provides an important opportunity to come together as a community to increase knowledge, offer support, and foster hope for those struggling with mental health challenges, now therefore be it resolved that I, Christina Villasenor, Mayor of the City of Fillmore, and on behalf of the Fillmore City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 25 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Fillmore. And I want to recognize Maya Zumaya and all of her efforts and her work in this and present this proclamation to her.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll allow Maya to talk about her work. Thank you, Maya.
Thank you, fellow champion for mental health awareness. Mayor Villasenor. I need glasses now, so I'm transitioning. But good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and community members. On behalf of the suicide prevention community, I want to sincerely thank the city of Fillmore for this proclamation and recognizing suicide prevention awareness. It is a powerful, or sorry, this proclamation is more than words on paper. It is a powerful acknowledgement that suicide is a public health crisis and that our community is committed to shining the light on it. Awareness saves lives. By talking about suicide prevention openly and compassionately, we remind those who are struggling that they are not alone. And we create pathways to hope and healing. This proclamation also helps us share an important message. There are free suicide prevention trainings available right here in our community, like the ones that you've mentioned. I acknowledge that suicide is a difficult, I lost my footing here, difficult and often uncomfortable topic, one that many shy away from. But tonight, I choose not to dwell on the heaviness of the subject. Instead, I choose to celebrate the work that is being done. Because this work is saving lives throughout this county. And fortunately, I have been able to witness this. I encourage everyone here to take advantage of these free trainings, whether you are a teacher, a parent, a student, a first responder, or a neighbor. Your awareness and compassion can make the difference. Together, we are building a safer, stronger, and more connected community. And thank you to the school district, who we are in works with in scheduling trainings. But like I said, these trainings are for everyone. Last year, we trained over 800 people. We're on our second year. So it takes hundreds to save thousands. And we sincerely hope that more people would take advantage of these trainings. So thank you so much for making this a priority in the city of Fillmore. Thank you.
Maya, I'm sorry, before you go. No, that's okay. It's perfectly fine. Before you go, if you can share with the community how to get in touch. So if someone's not connected to the school district, but maybe they're part of a youth group or church group, any nonprofit or anyone who's helping the community.
Even family members. We have done groups of family members.
Right, individual family members.
But that is a good question. You can contact me at MZHope4life@gmail.com or 805-767-7569. We really make these trainings convenient for the community by scheduling them at times that are convenient to them, at locations that are also convenient to them. So again, MZHope4life@gmail.com.
Wonderful. And now that we've proclaimed suicide awareness here in the city of Fillmore for the month of September, hopefully we can have a social media post about that and include this information for the community.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Okay, our next item here on the agenda are public comments. So I received one general public comment. Just wanted to check if anyone was up. This is for anything that is not an agendized item. Okay, going once, going twice. I will call up Bill Faith. Welcome, Bill. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council. I was just reminded, I wasn't planning on coming tonight. It's just I saw John Grammo and he mentioned that, I said, you know, it's not going to be too busy. I'm going to go. But what the gal just said about the suicide thing reminded me of what, not directly, but it's an opening. And that is that I knew I only have three minutes. Would you give me time when I, 30 seconds or a minute? That used to be out here, there was a bumper sticker, when bumper stickers were in vogue, that said, "Pray for me. I drive the 126." There it is. That's what I'm here about. I'm also reminded, Ms. James, she was a librarian at the high school. That someone here may remain. She died out there on El Dorado, trying to get out when some SO you-know-what was zooming down and smashed her. And they still haven't put that light up down there. I've been here about 15 times talking about lights. Why don't we have a green light down on the corner? Why? Because Caltrans said seven or eight years ago, there's not enough cars here. Or 25 years ago, when some of the people, including myself, were here talking about what's going to happen when this town grows up down here. This was after Santa Clarita, when they were talking about building the new hall ranch. Now we have, I saw a truck from out of state, 18-wheeler come through here about two weeks ago, doing 55. And I'm 77. I know how fast people are going. People there down by grocery outlet, they're cutting through, cutting through right there where St. Francis is, cutting down so they can cross over. You guys know it. I think most of the people here know it. Thank God, goodness, our law enforcement is doing what they can. But we need another law enforcement officer out there. And we need it now. We need one out there all the time. Sooner or later, there's going to be blood on hands for a terrible accident unless we go ahead and make some big changes with many of the people that are coming through our town that don't, I had someone come in my store about eight or nine years ago. Cussing, oh, this damn town. I got to spend time. It takes me too long to get through here. And that was nine years ago.
About 30 seconds, so.
Thank you. Just because it's a serious issue. We know that the traffic backs up to the other side of the bridge now, especially not just on Fridays now, but other days. It's got to be done. It's more important than almost anything else that we're talking about here. Is this highway and the drivers that are driving through the streets of Fillmore at 35, 45 miles an hour where there's kids. Sooner or later, unfortunately, there's going to be a tragedy, unfortunately. Thanks for listening. And I hope that everyone here has the courage to go ahead and do what needs to be done to find some of these people that are coming through our town at high speeds. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bill, for your words. Thank you. And he just left right now. Okay, I think in our manager's report, Manny will give an update. Catch Bill before he left. We'll have to reach out to him and make sure that he gets the update. One of us, too. Okay, now we're moving on to our city council reports, recommendations, and comments, and commission and board reports. I'll turn it over to my fellow councilmembers for any updates.
My committees haven't met yet. But I'll be meeting this coming week with Air Position Control Board and the Economic Development Committee. I'll report it at our next meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Carrie.
Yeah, I attended two meetings. One was, I filled in for a sitting council member from another part of the county for the Calvans, which is part of Ventura County Transportation Commission. And essentially, Calvans, they operate vans that are very specific to a lot of the agricultural areas. So there was a lot of discussion about what's been going on with regard to that whole issue and the vans and transportation. And they actually have seen a reduction in the amount of ag workers to transport with the vans. So some vans are sitting idle. Thought that was an interesting point. And then I also sat in on the Ventura County Transportation Commission on Friday, this past Friday. And at that meeting, the takeaway, good takeaway news for the city of Fillmore, we may hear more about this at our city manager's report, is that the actual construction of the bridge, the train trellis, the bridge here, is, construction's underway this week. They did a lot of preliminary work to it previously, but now the actual bridge is being rebuilt. They still are on target for completion of that bridge in October. So what that means essentially is that we will have train activity again in the city of Fillmore. We don't know what it's going to look like yet, but we're researching that and talking to those that are operating the trains. So I think that's a huge win for the city of Fillmore. And kudos to the Ventura County Transportation Commission because they are paying for most of this. And they made this happen, so.
That's really great news.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Yeah, and we're hoping that we can get some activity going before the holidays with some of the trains that we used to see around the holiday season, so.
That's great. Thank you. And yes.
Yeah, I just have a small update to correct an update, a mention that I had on last council meeting for the First Five Fatherhood Workshop. There was a conflict of schedule, so it has been moved to September 29. Originally, it was September 22. From 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., now it's at September 29. So there's a Fatherhood Workshop at First Five here in town. And so I just wanted to mention that that I mentioned last council meeting, it has changed to September 29 from September 22. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Louis.
Okay, and then for me, also, short update. So on September 5, I, along with the mayor, attended a meeting with one of the sign vendors that we are looking into putting up signs within the city of Fillmore at the request of the businesses within town. They basically had asked for more signage to direct people from the highway to bring in more foot traffic into downtown. And that really brought up the idea that we really need to look at a sign, I guess, specification, or a, what would you call it? Yeah, a program, basically, that would outline, if we're going to make signs, what do they need to look like? What are the standards we're going to use to put signs up? And so we heard from a vendor, Signature Signs, about doing that. They're one of several vendors that are going to be bidding on this. But I thought it was very useful. And it shows that the city is responding to the needs of the business community. And then on September 11, we're going to have a follow-up meeting also with the Business Roundtable at Red Engine Brewing Company. It's going to be, it's open to any businesses within town. But it is going to be specifically to, again, follow up and address any needs that the business community has here in Fillmore. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you for sharing the update about meeting with the potential vendor there for wayfinding signs. I have a couple of updates myself. At the end of August, I attended the annual nonprofit Town Hall. It's sponsored by our state senator and leader of the state senate, Monique Limon, and our assembly member, Steve Bennett. It honors Ventura County Two Nonprofits of the Year, one from Senator Limon, one from Assembly Member Bennett. The one from Assembly Member Bennett was for, goes given to Community Action Ventura County. And they're actually a nonprofit. They serve the whole county, but they've done work here in Fillmore to help qualified families alleviate some of their water bills. This was a little bit closer, a few years back, to the pandemic. And they offer assistance for utilities for qualified households. So that was great to see them get that nonprofit of the year award. The message that the assembly member and senator put out regarding nonprofits is that the work is more critical now than ever, seeing major cuts to social services, major cuts to healthcare, youth serving, and some family-serving organizations. So nonprofits are a safety net. And we really encourage the community, us, to support nonprofits. So we all usually have a few nonprofit organizations that are close to our hearts. So if you haven't in a while, look for ways to support them. We have great nonprofits here in Fillmore and across the county. Please be sure to do that. Nonprofits really need the assistance now. I also attended, usually for Labor Day, I go to the Santa Paula Parade. This year, I couldn't make it, but I attended a Labor Day event in Oxnard. It was at South Winds Park. And it was really well-attended. And what it was is local unions, including the laborers, SCIU, United Farm Workers, many different unions across the Central Coast Labor Council came together. And they provided a free community barbecue to the local residents in that area. And many of them are part of our agricultural worker, working community. So that was really great to see them come together. It was a really great event. And yeah, it made me think, I said, we should, you know, maybe get on the ball of seeing what we could do, even something small here locally for Labor Day. It would be really great to do some kind of celebration. And again, work with our nonprofits and our local unions and union members. We know we have a lot of union representation in Fillmore to put something together. Just wanted to share that. In terms of my being on the board of the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, we had our first meeting with our new GM. Eric Zetz went excellent. And the big news is that the board did approve funding for a comprehensive feasibility study on the expansion of Tolan Landfill after its closure. Right now, we're in our last and final cell. We are now working the final area of Tolan that is able to hold trash. And that's likely to be filled within 10 to 12 years. So thus, approving this feasibility study is a first look to see if we can extend the life of Tolan Landfill for perhaps up to 60 more years beyond that. So that's really critical for our community here in the Santa Clara Valley and really the county as a whole. One thing that this feasibility study is going to look at is to see if it is not too close or too close to an earthquake fault that falls along that line, I think on the western side of Tolan Landfill. So I'll keep the community updated on that. Just wanted to remind everyone, too, about the importance of Ventura Regional Sanitation District. They are a public entity. Waste water management, solid waste management. The Board of Directors are made up of elected officials across the county from different member cities. Again, it does not turn a profit. It charges fees to, you know, their rates cover the costs and the administration. And so it's, you know, we really want to keep the life of the Ventura Regional Sanitation going. My last update, and I think probably our city manager will capture this, too, but I just wanted to say that we do have a date for our Fillmore Immigration Resource Forum. And it's actually coming up Thursday, September 18, here at City Hall. I want to make a note, and I'll say this in Spanish, that the forum is actually going to be entirely in Spanish to best serve our community. That's going to benefit from these immigration resources, knowledge, information, and that sort of thing. So. Por favor, comunidad, reserve la fecha. El Foro de Recursos de Inmigración en Fillmore va a estar aquí, en el Ayuntamiento de Fillmore, jueves 18 de septiembre. So esta foro es completamente en español para servir mejor nuestra comunidad. And so if anyone needs Spanish, sorry, if anyone needs English interpretation, they can receive it here through the city. You can call the city and look at our social media. There's a QR code. And you can scan that QR code to say that you need interpretation to be able to interpret the forum in English. Just wanted to share that. Thank you. Okay. All right, if that is it for updates, I'll move on to our consent calendar. And I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
Okay, I have a first, I have a second?
Second, that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on, then, to our first business item, which is the amended and restated agreement for solid waste handling services between the city of Fillmore and Santa Clara Valley Disposal and conduct a public hearing on the proposed solid waste collection rates as required for a Proposition 218 majority protest process. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Kimberly Nelson. I'm your solid waste coordinator. I own a company called Solid Waste Solutions. And I've worked for you for quite a few years. We're here tonight to talk about the solid waste agreement that you currently have and updating and extending it, and also adding three new service levels. So the background on the agreement is that the agreement was, began October 1, 2015. It expires September 30, 2025. It has three extensions available in it. On January 9, 2025, Santa Clara Valley Disposal gave us a letter requesting an extension. We worked with city staff, the city manager, the city attorney, and E.J. Harrison. And we all decided that the contract really needs to be updated, that they're in compliance with all the requirements of the existing contract. So the contract was extended for the five years per a letter between the city manager and E.J. Harrison. Upon completion of saying that we will do the extension, we found that they are in compliance and they're doing a great job. But we also found that our current agreement that's expiring at the end of the month is lacking all of the organics program, the SB 1383 that we currently have to do in accordance with CalRecycle and our ordinance, the city's particular ordinance, 21934. So we worked together. We took the existing contract. We folded in any amendments. We folded in the definitions and the requirements of SB 1383. We worked with city staff, the city attorney, my office, and Santa Clara Valley Disposal. Through that review, we found that there were three service levels that weren't defined, that needed to be defined because of SB 1383. When we brought that to the attention of the city attorney, they said to do the additional service levels, we have to do a Prop 218. So that's why we're throwing two things at you at once. We apologize because it's confusing. So your new agreement, the restated agreement, offers you some new service levels. It defines everybody's roles and responsibilities, the city and Santa Clara Valley. You get three new service levels. So now, let's say you have two 64-gallon trash containers. You might be able to use 196. You didn't have that service level before. But if this all goes through the way we hope it does, you'll be able to get that. So service levels can change, which is great. We added two additional bulky items for residential homes. So now you get four per year. So you call in, you get four free bulky items. And the thing that makes me the most happy, because I deal with illegal dumping a lot, is we added multifamily bulky item collections. So if a complex has 10 units, it gets five bulky items per year. So the manager or the HOA can call and set it up for the person. But before, they had none. So now we've added that in, which is great. One of the last things we added in, which is also fantastic, is a 10% senior discount. And a senior just needs to contact E.J. Harrison, probably provide a driver's license and a utility bill. And then they can take care of that. We're going to add two household battery collections, containers. We're going to probably put one at City Hall and one at the libraries where Erica and I had discussed putting them. I had discussed putting them. And they will be monitored by E.J. Harrison, so when they're full, they're taken away. And they just, they're usually tubes or boxes and you just put your batteries in. And it's great if you have children because they create batteries, like there's no tomorrow. And then we increased the amount of illegal dumping collections that are done at no charge to the city. You originally had 45 and now you'll have 80. So that's going to help Public Works and it'll help reduce illegal dumping, because when people don't see it so much, they don't do it so much.
Can I ask you a question, sorry, before you moved on? On the bulky pickups, was, is that a bulky item pickup? Five items, individual items per a 10 unit complex?
Five individual collections.
Pickups? Five different times?
Yes.
That they will come to a 10 unit multi housing complex?
Right.
Okay.
It said it, it said it 50% of the total units in a multifamily.
Okay.
So if there were 100 units, they'd get 50. It's really kind of cool.
Wow. That's really great. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome. So as we were discussing, the restating of the agreement has caused the Prop 218 hearing because we added three different service levels. In your packet is Resolution 244207, and it defines the three levels that we're going to add and the rates for those. And if you notice, it's this, we did this last year. We had a Prop 218 hearing for the refuse rates, and it was a five-year period. It went out to 2029. So this one, what we're presenting, is just the final four years, so that we stay in line with the last previous hearing. We're not changing any of the rates that we did the last time. We're just adding a few more. We're adding the 96 gallon trash cart. We're adding multifamily recycling bins at one and a half and three yard size and commercial, one and a half and three yard recycling bins. So in accordance with Prop 218, to add those, we had to do a public hearing notice. The public hearing notice is mailed to every property, and it was mailed on June 10th, 2025. Has to be mailed for, at least 45 days before this hearing, and it goes out to all the properties. We also have to describe what's the basis of this. Well, how can we do this? We can't just have rates. So the refuse rates, as we said in, last year in the hearing, are based on the cost of providing the service. Labor, equipment, materials, supplies, all those kinds of things go into those rates just as they did the year before. The amended and restated agreement was just done to cover these as well. There have been no other changes in rates at all. Everything stays the same. So if you look at our rate table, you'll see that there's four years there, and they increase slightly. They increase by 3%, which is the rate of increase that you approved last year. So it increases exactly the same way every other rate that you had before. These rates did not exist in the 2024 hearing. These are new. But the, the increase is exactly the same. The Prop 218 process, by the receipt of the rate increase, or the additional rates, I'm sorry, we met the procedural requirement per the city attorney to do this. So that's required us to do this. We've done the 45 day notice, and now we're holding the hearing. The notice that was sent out is also in your packet. It's in English and in Spanish, and they were mailed together. They weren't mailed separate. And they were also on the city's website since June as well and available. They had the hearing date, the time, the location, the basis for what we're doing and why we were doing it because of the restated agreement. And also it has how you protest, because any property owner, you can get one protest per property. And so far, we've received two. The protests are received in writing by the city clerk, and they have to be before the public hearing, or spoken in comments and then handed in writing. So our, our request of the city council tonight is to review the amended and restated agreement, open the majority protest hearing, close the majority protest hearing if we have no comments, poll the city clerk to see the number of protests that we received. If we received 50%, which would be 2,500, and then plus one, then we would not be able to go any further. But if we did not, then we're asking for you to please review the amended agreement and the resolution so that we can move forward. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You answered most of my questions. I just, I have one. May I ask?
Yes, questions.
The new rates, how, are they, how do they compare to nearby cities or, or cities comparable to Fillmore in population?
Well, I have a crazy table that I could show you, but I don't have it uploadable. We're about average. What this does, what is, it makes you have all the service levels that the cities around you have, which is great, because the 96 gallon container is a lot, is an option for a lot of people. A lot of the cities around here, that's what most people subscribe to, not the 64. And an extra container if you have, I would have needed it with my family, a three. So, but the rates are, with what I have, they're right in line. And if you want, I can share this table with you.
All right. Thank you. I think there's a couple of questions. Yes?
Yes. Hi, Kimberly. So, so I read through all of this, and I have to, I have to confess, I was confused. And I think probably a lot of our people that received this were probably confused because, for example, I had one of my old teachers call me and say, John, I really don't understand what, what does this mean? What, what exactly is this that I'm getting or I'm protesting or not protesting? So I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So, okay, so just to clarify, so right now, the standard bin that I just, I just heard, the number, 64 gallons is what everyone, pretty much in the city has today, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, and, and what do they pay for that 64 gallon trash bin? The, the solid waste bin?
Um, for 24, 25, 37, 31?
$37.31. Okay. And so if they have two of those, they would pay double that. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. I think the rate structure, they'd pay a bit of an increase, but it's not double.
Okay. So then, can you go back to the slide that shows the current rate for the 96 that's being proposed? Okay, so the first line right there shows what they would pay for a 96 gallon cart service. In other words, rather than have two of the solid waste bins at the 37, 31 for one and some slightly higher number for two, this would then introduce a new rate for a bigger 96 gallon for $41.43 this coming year.
That's correct.
Okay.
It would begin October 1st.
Okay. So now I think I can, I can respond to my former teacher. Okay. And then, okay, so then, explain to me if you would, the 1.5 cubic yard recycle bin one time per week. Is that like one of the, the tilt up bins, the, a big, one of the big, what most people call a dumpster? What, what is that 1.5 cubic yard? Because the one thing that, I guess, coming from an engineering background, I, I don't like to see is mixing up different units of measure. So 96 gallon versus 1.5 cubic yard, it's kind of confusing. So can you give me an idea what that, what is that 1.5 cubic yard versus the 96 gallon?
I think, I think my pal's at E.J. Harrison. How many 96 gallons can go into a 1.5?
I mean, we could probably do the math, but you guys probably know better.
I think it's two. But the, the rates that we're adding for recyclable service, there were no rates for recyclable service in your, in what was approved last summer, last August. So these are new rates because they didn't exist before. And now we have to ensure that every service level is there per SB 1383.
Okay, I understand the law that was placed, passed at the state level. So, okay, so now we're talking about recyclables. So $60 for a 1.5 cubic yard recycled bin. Okay, so I roll out the, the trash bins every week. That's my job. So I know that I have a blue recycled bin.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and what, what am I being charged today for that recycled bin?
At a residential property, it's built into the rates that are shown here. You don't pay extra. So if you had an, if you change to a 96 gallon cart?
Right.
You get a trash recycling and organics for 41, 43.
Okay. So then why would I pay $60 for a 1.5 cubic yard?
These are multifamily and commercial rates. You're not going to have a, a metal bin at your house unless you had a large, like organic property.
Okay.
A farmer, just a large property.
Okay, so all the MFD rates are all like that?
Yes.
Okay, got you. Okay, so they, they probably already would have those big, you know, tilt up dumpsters.
Yes.
Okay, so really the one that is going to apply to 90% of the people watching or out in the audience is actually the first line?
Correct.
Unless they have a business or they have, for some reason, a farm or something, where they have the, the big dumpsters.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, I think, I think I'm, I'm clear now. So thank you for your patience and thank you, the rest of, the rest of the council.
Oh, those were great questions.
But yeah, I wanted to make sure I understood what I'm voting on before I vote on it. And more importantly, I'm going to be asked this question by my former fourth grade teacher when, when I get done, so.
Well, I'm sorry it wasn't perfectly clear, but it is confusing.
No, no, it's okay. No, no, no problem. I mean, that's why we're here to ask questions, right? So thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Thank you. Did you want to add anything? Okay, great. Yeah, I think the, the main thing, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Carrie.
I, I think John was worried he was going to have to push out that dumpster from his backyard. That was his concern.
Well, we could get him one.
He'd prefer the barrels, I think. Okay. Anyway, I do have another question.
Okay.
And you're going to laugh again, but what's considered, what, who's considered a senior to receive the senior discount? I'm asking for a friend.
It's 65. 65 and older.
Okay.
Does this recommend qualify?
And I have one more question, actually, on a follow-up to the senior question. You said to, for seniors who would like to be a part of this, just get in touch, call, call Harrison, and present some sort of form of ID.
Correct. Harrison has processes set up for that, and they'll tell you what they need and then they'll process it for them.
Excellent. Great.
Okay, one, one last question. So just, I know, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm asking the question just so that anyone listening. So again, if someone wants to protest this, what they're essentially protesting is the new additional rates. Because really, the, which, what I'm hearing is, the existing rates, if someone is a residential customer, their rates are not changing other than the schedule that has already been laid out. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay, so I would think most people wouldn't really care about adding this because most of these don't affect them unless they're going to be trading in two bins for one, right?
Right. You are correct. It's just a legal responsibility that the city undertakes whenever we change rates.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Okay, thank you so much, Kimberly, for the presentation, all the information, and for having those answers to those questions. Thank you. Okay, so at this point in time, at this point in time, I will open the public hearing. And I have not received any public comment for this agenda item, but I will ask the clerk if we have, you know, how many protests we have received and if it has been a 50% plus one protest received.
Mayor, we received only two protests this evening.
Okay, that does not meet the threshold at all for a 50% plus one. That being done, I'm hearing no public comments. I will now close the public hearing. And then we shall, as a city council, discuss and I'll entertain a motion on this item. All right, we have no questions.
So deferring to our city attorney, I'm assuming item F is our recommendation. Yeah. Okay, so I would like a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the restated agreement for solid waste handling services between City of Fillmore and Santa Clara Valley Disposal.
Okay. All right. I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next business item is item 9B. This is also a public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendment 25-02 to implement the 2021 to 2029 housing element. And welcome, Brian. Evening.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City of Fillmore. This is the Housing Element Action Plan, coming back to you. Let's get this up here. Little bit of background, city council had approved the action items that are being implemented as part of the housing element and a slightly revised housing element at that time, back on June 10, 2025. And these were for action items, which are to implement the actual housing element. Those include things like identifying sites where low income housing could be located and removing government restrictions on the development of low income housing if it meets certain criteria. So kind of the basic gist of what some of those action items are. After the city council had approved the housing element revisions and the action items, it was then resent back to the, the Housing and Community Development Department of the State of California. They certified the housing element. I'll back up. They had previously, conditionally certified the housing element, so everything was good, but for implementing these, these action items, which are components of it. So we were pretty, pretty far along at that time. Action item 32 is one of the ones that, that you approved, and it's to create a housing overlay zone on specific parcels. So again, it's identifying properties, and then it's removing any government restrictions that would prohibit housing on those properties. And just a quick recap, those are shown here. It's basically three separate locations. And I'll just kind of zoom in a little bit there on what those properties were. When it got resent back to HCD subsequent to that hearing, the staff reviewed everything and said, we need another sentence or two added to your zone text amendment related to this one action item. So one minor change was needed, and it's per state government code, and it has to do with the buy right housing component. If there's 20% or more affordably designated units, it should be clear in the ordinance that that is a buy right housing. We, we kind of think it was in there by way of triangulation, but they wanted it to be a little more explicit. So that prompted a zone text amendment to this one section. So in the HO zone, HO zone, which is the housing overlay zone of the properties I just showed, we added a footnote, and the footnote is the, are these two sentences allowed, so that's clear to the developers that it's buy right housing. And it's not a project under SEQA. And it's by right basically means there's no conditional use permit or development permit issued. It won't go to the planning commission or the city council. It would be approved by the planning director. But you might recall, at the time, we had development standards. So we wanted it to meet a certain standard so that fits Fillmore's character and design and doesn't cause compatibility issues presumably to the neighbors. So those standards will still be applied, but it'll be more of a ministerial action. It'll be more of an objective review. And then we added one minor thing. It's in the definition, but through talking with HCD staff, they said, well, it might be nice if you put the minimum in this table too, although it's elsewhere. So we went ahead and added that as well. And we have been in close contact with HCD over this. So I believe that once we send this up there, our letter of housing element certification has already been ready to go and they're ready to issue it. Right? So we're, we've been, we don't want to go through this again. So it should be it, right? Planning Commission had reviewed this very same change back on August 27th, and they recommended that the city council approve the ordinance. And these, this ordinance has no fiscal impact to the city, and it achieves the goals of community-centered growth, promoting sustainable, balanced development that preserves our small town charm. And the planning commission's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, adopt the first reading to introduce the ordinance 25987, approving zoning ordinance amendment 2502, and a finding of exemption from SEQA. And I'll just read again what this ordinance is. It's an ordinance of the city council of the City of Fillmore, California, amending Fillmore Municipal Code, sections 6.04.0401, 6.04.0410, and 6.04.0415 to implement the 2021, 2029 housing element and finding of exemption from SEQA. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Brian, for your presentation. All right, questions?
I do have a, a couple of questions. So I've been reached out to by a few constituents over this issue. I wouldn't say it's necessarily an issue. We've talked about the housing element multiple times, but sometimes I've gotten people concerned, hey, I'm hearing I'm going to have low income development next to where I live. And that's not necessarily what we're saying here, right? What we're saying here is we're, we're complying with, with the housing element of California. And, and through those housing elements, 20% of the developments are low income housing. Is that correct?
Yeah, it allow, well, this specifically allows for, if you have 20% or more of the units, so if you had 100 units and 20 of those were designated affordable, it's a buy right approval. So no hearing, no subjective review. So, so, so they would get a component of affordable housing. Someone could, a developer could propose 100% affordable housing, and that would be allowed.
I see.
Yeah, so, but, but it's, it's implementing what's required under the state law.
But just to be clear, on, on the size of parcels, or the three size of the parcels that we're looking at here, I mean, you, they're not large enough to build a, a development to the size of 100 units, per se. I mean, I know you brought that up as an example for the, you know, as an easy 20%.
Yeah, you could get up to 24 units per acre. And I, yeah, I don't have the specific data. I didn't bring that with me on the size of these parcels. the specific data. I didn't bring that with me on the size of these parcels exactly. But to be at a density of up to twenty-four units per acre.
One's six acres, one's one and a half acres, and one's two acres.
Yeah. It could get pretty high.
So my response to those constituents is that Fillmore is complying with these California regulations, or, or, or laws, or guidelines as to how we grow our city responsibly, and that a percentage of that is low-income housing. I guess some of the concerns from, just, just my assumption is that their concerns are, are we getting all these projects next to our house? Obviously, that's not the case. But I just wanted to mention that and kind of throw that out there, and, and see, and, and hear from you guys as well as, as to what a good response would be for these constituents who are concerned when they receive these letters in the mail especially.
Well, when they, when they receive notices that we're doing the overlay, they're certainly welcome to come and speak, or provide written comments, or call us. So far, we haven't received any comments. And like you mentioned, this is not a project specifically. This is just an overlay. The underlying zoning still, still exists. So a developer would evaluate the property based on the market conditions, and, and what kind of return they might need to do the development. So it, it doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna do, you know, low income across the board, but they, they would have that potential if they wanted to, if they need to get those higher densities. So it's, like I said, it's not a project per se at this point, but it allows some leniency for potential future projects. And it's mandated by the state, so we really don't have much of a choice. If we don't fulfill these requirements, and the state code has even written in here for this particular change, there's something called builder's remedy, which means a builder could come in and propose basically any development with no standards whatsoever. So it could be any height, any density, any size.
Anywhere.
Anywhere, if we don't have the housing element certified. So that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate it. You know, I just wanted to kind of throw it out there, and, and, and here, get some insight, because some people are not watching this, this meeting, and they might ask me again in a couple of days, "Hey, what's gonna happen?" And, and I don't want them to be very concerned about the situation, because I think, overall, the City of Fillmore is doing a great job when, when it comes to the housing element, and I think people should be confident about that.
Yeah, and the, the properties have been sitting vacant for quite a long time. So this, this allows just, you know, more diversity in terms of projects that could come. And in the housing element, we, we have an ample amount of space available on paper by way of zoning, but it hasn't really been realized in terms of actual housing development. We've, we're not getting the, the development interest. But on paper, we continue to upzone. We call it upzone when we increase densities, as required by the state. We continue to process the paper, but the developments aren't necessarily coming unless, you know, the conditions and the money is available to, to make it work. But that's to be seen. Yes.
Brian, so, just to clarify, so what I, what I think I heard you say was, during, during your presentation, was that these, so this overlay for these three particular parcels, the, the effect of us approving this, my understanding from what I heard, was that, not that there won't be any review if they, if they choose to go that route, there will be a review still, and it will still have to conform to our building codes.
Yes.
But it's just not this, this, the typical process of a conditional use permit, all, all of that.
Correct.
That whole process, right? It's, instead, it goes to basically one administrative review.
Yes.
And so that, so it's, it's kind of like two paths. The normal path versus this path, which is much quicker.
Yes.
But it's still reviewed, is I guess my question. Is that correct?
Yes. And that, and that's kind of the trade-off, is the state's trying to incentivize housing development. But at the same time, it's, it's also eliminating public scrutiny, you know, well, some, a large portion of it. But in knowing that that's what's being implemented here, we came up with objective design standards, so that they're measurable design standards, and, and it wouldn't be allowing a lot of subjectivity from staff. We would have to look and, and basically act like it's a checklist. So developers would know.
Like setbacks.
Yeah.
Measurable setbacks, things like that, right?
Yeah, to take away some of the guessing, guesswork out of it. And we did process, at the time when you approved this action item, originally back in June, we had a pretty lengthy set of design standards that's on the books right now. So we would review every project per that design standard, and then it would get approved ministerially, but, you know, it wouldn't be brought to public light necessarily under state law. That's, that's the trade-off.
And then, when, when you're looking further off, the builder's remedy would be even less.
Less.
Yeah. And, and, yeah, exactly, in terms of objective standards, as he was mentioning. So, okay.
I have another quick question on Sespe, that property. Is that the old insectary?
Yes.
Yes.
It is. Interesting. Thank you.
All right. Have any? The old insectary on Sespe Avenue?
Yeah. I think I did a field trip there as a kid.
Okay. All right. Is there any? Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions? Okay. I think I officially need to also conduct a public, I'm looking over at Tiffany, to open a public hearing on this item. Okay, so public, public hearing is now open. And I have not received any comments on this agenda item. Seeing no comments and hearing none, I will now close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion on this item.
I move that the City Council take the following actions, conduct a public hearing, and approve first reading to introduce ordinance number twenty-five-nine-eight-seven, and approving zoning ZOA twenty-five-oh-two, and finding of exemption from SEQA.
And can I have you read that ordinance, Mayor Protem? The title?
Oh, ordinance twenty-five-six, zoning ordinance amendment twenty-five-oh-two, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fillmore, California, amending Fillmore Municipal Code Sections six-dash-o-four-dash-o-four-o-one, six-dash-o-four-o-four-ten, and six-dash-o-four-dot-o-four-one-five to implement the 2021 to 2029 housing element and finding of SEQA exemption.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our last business item, nine C. This is the authorization to purchase KM International two-ton hot box through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. Okay, good evening, Joe.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Council. This is a request for, to purchase a hot box trailer. This is a critical piece of equipment that we need for our pothole repairs, and future asphalt pavement repairs that would otherwise be contracted services. This is something that staff did budget for, and it was included in the budget, but unfortunately, we got it wrong. We, when we talked to the manufacturer, we didn't fully understand that the base model is what we had asked for in the budget, and that's for twenty-five thousand. There's equipment that has to be attached to that base model in order for it to really function like it's intended to function. So we got this one wrong. And our shortfall in funding is thirty-seven thousand and change. Fortunately, as presented to you all last City Council meeting, TDA, it being, you know, utilizing more money for the transportation part of TDA, it left us little money for overlay projects. It did leave us forty thousand left over after transportation. So this fit perfectly into the need for, to fully fund this trailer that we need to buy. So, when we budgeted, we went through our, you know, we leveraged our, our resources through Sourcewell, and found a contractor, Craftco. And you have the itemized detail of this trailer now in front of you. This, you know, has everything that we will need to hit the ground running once we get the trailer, and go and pick it up asphalt every so often. Hot mix is one of those things that it's a permanent asphalt repair. Currently, what we do is use a cold mix formula to fill our potholes, but that's a temporary measure. That has to be dug out once in a while, and then replaced with hot mix. Some of our, you know, when we do utility line trenching, you know, for our water system, we're putting back cold mix, and that, again, has to be contracted out for a service to come in, dig that cold mix out, and then put the hot mix down. So this trailer allows us to get ahead of that. We will still need like a bridge with the, the contracted services for a number of years just to get caught up. But, you know, ultimately, you know, five years down the road, I'd like to say that this trailer is gonna be all what we need, and that we'll be able to get rid of the sixty-five, I think we budget annually, for contracted services to come in and fill our, or replace our, our cold mix with our hot mix. So this is definitely a wise investment for us. It is steeper than what we thought it was gonna be, but it is definitely gonna pay off in the future. So with that, staff is recommending that you authorize the allocation of thirty-seven-three-eighty-nine-oh-five from the TDA Fund Two-O-four, and authorize the purchase of one KM International two-ton hot box with accessories from Craftco, Inc., through our Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. The contract number there for a total amount for this trailer at sixty-two-thousand-three-eighty-nine-oh-five.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. Do we have any questions?
Just a comment. This is, this is great news. I, for one, have been, I think, pretty consistent in advocating for us to, to do something like this. So this is great. I'm, I'm very happy about this moving forward.
I'm excited, too.
Excellent. Ditto. Ditto. Okay, across the board. Yes, Carrie?
Just a quick question with regard to our city staff. Does require additional training? I mean, we haven't had one of these in the past, right?
Correct. Yeah, no.
Who's qualified to actually use this hot box?
There is no qualification that's needed, but this includes training. So when they deliver us the trailer, it'll come with training for our staff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And the, the company has posted a lot of videos on their product. I don't, I don't want to say there's no, you know, technical aspect to it, but it is pretty simple and straightforward once you understand the equipment.
Okay, so you're gonna pull it up on YouTube and figure out how to operate it?
Yeah, exactly.
That's how we do everything now. That's a great question, though.
That's how I put my tie on when I wear a tie.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
All right. So no further questions or discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the City Council authorize and allocate thirty-seven-thousand-three-eighty-nine-oh-five from Transportation Development Act Fund Two-O-four, and authorize the purchase of one KM International two-ton hot box with accessories from Cafco, Inc., through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, contract zero-five-zero-six-two-five-dash-CFC for sixty-two-thousand-three-eighty-nine-oh-five.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, I have a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we said the City of Fillmore residents be very happy. Okay. Thank you. That concludes our business items. We now move on to our city manager verbal report.
The city manager before I give my formal identity. One thing, I forgot my report. I wanted to notify our fellow City Council members that the 2026 Policy Committee applications are now available, and you can find them on the League of California website, and they will be open until September twenty-sixth of this year. So if you're interested in serving on a policy committee, as highly suggested you do, I know Councilmember Brogie and myself served on one in the past. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay, we'll pass it on.
All right, all right. Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. Let's see here. Let me start. First of all, I was contacted by the, the new government affairs liaison from Southern California Edison. His name is Ian Anderson. I think I passed that information over to the council. And they want to host a wildfire community safety meeting here in Fillmore. And so we've been working with them on a date and a location. We were looking at the Active Adults Center, but we ended up coming back to the council chambers for, you know, purposes of, of, you know, presentations and whatnot. So we've got that booked for October sixth, at six to eight o'clock, and that's a Monday. And so the community's gonna be invited to come out and participate. And they're still working on the agenda, so what I'd like to communicate to you is an offer that they've made, which is to take some recommendations from the council on any particular subject matter that, that you want to hear back on. And so if, if anything comes up that you want to hear presented in, in particular from Edison, please email that to me, and I'll pass it on to Ian. Okay? And so in addition to Southern California Edison, I think they're gonna have Ventura County Fire Department, their, their chief, Dustin Gardner. I'm gonna, they offered an extension, an invitation to our chief, Garola, to participate. And then also their Ventura County Office of Emergency Services Director, Patrick Maynard, as well. So that's, again, that's October sixth, so very thankful for them to, to host that here. And that will be an event that will be offered to the communities of Pai Ru and Santa Paula. So it's gonna be advertised as more of a regional event, but it will be hosted here in Fillmore. Any questions, please let me know about that. We are meeting, and I know Mr. Faith, I'm, I'm so sorry, he, he left, but we are gonna be having, staff has, has prepared a, or coordinated is probably the better word, a meeting with several agencies to discuss Highway one-twenty-six safety. So in particular, with Caltrans, the Ventura County Transportation Commission, Southern California Association of Governments, CHP. We've invited a representative from Supervisor Long's office, Director of Roads and Transportation with the county. And the, the goal for this meeting, unfortunately, it's only gonna be limited to forty-five minutes. So we're, we're gonna keep it very brief. And, and, and the overall goal is to have a, a future meeting where we can spend more time with, with these agencies to discuss the data that they have for us to, to, to review and look at pertinent to the safety issues on the highway. So accidents, the nature of those accidents, where they occur. I think it's gonna be very important that we sit down and share the data that we have, CHP, Caltrans, the county, and, and then work on a, on a, on a strategy for a present, for a larger presentation, for a community meeting here in Fillmore. So this may take two meetings or so before we, I think, we're, we're prepared and ready to come for a larger meeting here at, at City Hall. So we'll be having that tomorrow, and I, actually, Councilmember Brogie, in her capacity as a transportation commissioner, will be on that call as well, as will Jenny Crosswhite with the City of Santa Paula, who's gonna be the incoming chair for the Southern California Association of Governments, that they also have a lot of grants for, for transportation and safety. So we're, we're excited to have them on board as well. So we are actively working on that, and that is a priority that, that the council has set for staff to work on. Okay, any questions about that? Please let me know, and I'll be reporting back on how that meeting goes on the tenth. Okay? So, on September eleventh, we have, in the morning, it's gonna be a very busy morning. First and foremost, the Fillmore Fire Department, they've set a tradition of honoring those that lost their lives during, on nine eleven, and we're gonna recognize and remember that, and honor that on nine eleven at six-thirty in front of the, the fire station. And there will be a bell ringing that will occur at approximately six-fifty-five, so we invite members of the council and the community to come down and join us for that. At eight-thirty on the same day, on nine eleven, we're gonna have our second Fillmore Business Roundtable Meeting, and that'll be held at Red Engine Brewery, and that'll take place at eight-thirty AM. So all businesses are gonna be, you know, are invited to participate and come down, and we'll be giving them an update on the work that the city has been busy with to do our part to, to help our business community, and then also give the, the business community an opportunity to provide us with feedback on how we can all work better together in, in supporting our, our business community. So please come on down for that. That's eight-thirty, nine-eleven at Red Engine Brewery. And special thank you to, to Preston and his team at Red Engine Brewery for opening, opening up their, their business and hosting us for this event. So thank you very much. Next, Councilmember Garnika, he, you know, made a presentation and, and talked about how we had a meeting with Signature Signs, a sign company, one of the sign companies that were gonna be that we're going to be meeting with to potentially bring back to the council a, a proposal for a wayfinding sign program. As you mentioned, Councilmember Garnika, and thank you also, Councilmember, I mean, Mayor, Mayor Vea Senor for joining us as part of the ad hoc committee for this effort. This, this effort is aimed to direct more of the traffic from the 126 and from the city as a whole down to our downtown and, and important places like our museums, parking, parking locations, and to, to try to increase traffic in downtown. And one of the ways that a lot of cities do this is by preparing a comprehensive sign program to have consistency in, in design and theme throughout the city. And so we're excited with, with that progress and we'll be, we'll be having feature companies come and, and, and present to the ad hoc committee and, and hopefully with the, with the goal of presenting that back to the council when we have all these three bits prepared and presented to us. Next, let's see, we also have our Immigration Resources Workshop coming up on September 18th, which the mayor did provide an update on that. And that's going to take place on Thursday, like I mentioned, September 18th at 6:00 p.m. And in, in, in working on this, we, we were looking at having to decide with whether or not we were going to, you know, have this, this meeting in, in October sometime or a little sooner. We wanted to make sure that our, our legal counsel could be present and there was a time conflict in the last week of September. So the date that we shot for, Angel and I, thank you very much, Angel, for working with me on this, was, was the September 18th date. And we were able to get commitments from several resources, several agencies to participate in this with us. So we've got MYcop, like we had spoken about, we've got 805 Undocumented. We had to reach out to a different attorney to provide the, the, the legal update. And so we're luckily, we're able to find another immigration attorney to provide this. And we made sure with, with every participant that we worked with, that we fully explained the parameters with which the council agreed to, to host and, and discuss the resources available. So they've, they're all in agreement on that. So I think you're going to be pleased with what's presented. The one thing that we did also agree with them is they, they really felt it was important to communicate the resources in their presentations and, and the language that most likely that the, the audience that's going to be present for this meeting or listening via the stream natively speaks. So that's why we decided to make the event a Spanish language event. And for, for folks that would be participating that didn't speak Spanish, we're, we're going to be, be having translation services available from Spanish to English. So that was the change that we made and we feel it, it's appropriate given, given the demographic that we're going to be, that we're trying to, to educate here and provide resources for. If any questions about that, please let me know. And that's going to be held here at City Hall Council Chambers. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So it will be live streamed to our social media, Facebook and YouTube channels, YouTube channel?
Yes, that's the plan, just like a council meeting.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not sure if I saw that on the social media that we put out just so that we could let folks know that not only is it in person, but that we're, we're, it's going to be available live stream and the recording is going to be available.
Right.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do that, we'll get that information out. Okay? Questions? Good? Okay. Next, I've got some good news from the Clean Power Alliance. They informed us that they have approved our application for it to be accepted into the Clean Power Alliance. So the, the next steps will be to get an ordinance before the council, before November 30th. There's a deadline there. So we're, I'm hoping to get that before you at, at our second meeting in September, our next meeting. If not, the first meeting in October. So we'll meet that deadline. And then from there, they've got some deadlines with this, to submit this to the California Public Utilities Commission. And, you know, everything goes according to plan. We're likely to start with the CPA in 2027 is what it's going to look like per California Public Utility Commission rules. So be on the lookout for that item to be coming forward at a, at a subsequent meeting. As Councilmember Brogie had mentioned, the work has begun on the Sespe Creek Rail Bridge. So that's underway and, and as she mentioned, they are still on target for a late October completion date. When they say late October, I'm always, want to give them a little bit of grace, so maybe early November. And so very excited about that. And we'll be tracking that very closely and, and, and like as Councilmember Brogie mentioned, you know, anticipating more train activity. So likely we'll be talking with the rail operators to, to make sure that the council is aware of, of this activity and hopefully we can plan for it and hopefully partner on some things. So I'll be giving you updates on that as it, as we progress. Another effort that's going to be underway, we're, we're looking at setting up a meeting, and when I say we, myself, the city of Fillmore, County of Ventura, and the city of Santa Paula to, to start the agreement on the, on the Spirit of Santa Paula homeless shelter for the 20, for this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. So we're behind on that. And what, I'm not saying we, but as, as, as a partnership. So we're hoping to schedule that, that meeting within the next two weeks and hopefully get that all taken care of and, and presented. And once, once we have an agreement on, on what that's going to look like, we'll bring it back to the council for your approval, much like we did the first. Next, I'd like to give you an update on the homeless encampment grants. So we, I did prepare a budget modification, so I, I did make some, some, some alterations within the budget agreement. So this had to do with case management and also commitment to funds for the development of the affordable property, the Fillmore Terrace Apartments. And we're also reviewing our agreement with the service provider, Turning Point Foundation. And we're hoping to, to get started on the grant October 1. And the healthcare agency is all ready to go for us to start in their offices located off of one, Highway 126 off of Telegraph. And so we're very excited about that. They've got two offices committed for our case management to operate, you know, at the hours that we need. So they've been very, very amenable to that, they're going to fully furnish it. So they've, they've been, they've been amazing. Summer Concert Series this Friday from 6 to 8. Wano and Friends will be the, the band that we'll be playing, so they're very popular. Please come on down. Oh, Wano and Friends.
Wano.
Wano and Friends. He's bringing his friends.
J-U-A.
Yeah, that's right.
You haven't heard of Wano and Friends? Wano.
Wano and Friends.
Wano and Friends.
Yeah, so Wano and Friends, they, they played at a number of, of city events, they're very popular, they're a great band, just like all the, like all the other bands we've had at the Summer Concert Series. So, but yeah, the Wano and Friends, great, great band, come on out, 6 o'clock. Lastly, I just want to remind the community, our Citywide Trash Cleanup Day, September 27th, 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. And this is going to be at the Well Number Four site located on Good Enough Road between A Street and B Streets. So once again, that is on September 27th from 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. Please take a look at our social media post. We're trying to get information and, and, and sharing a social media post on that so people know what type of information, what type of, you know, trash they can, they can, they can drop off there. And spread the word on that. And that's, that concludes my, my manager report. And Councilmember Brogie, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Going back to the Clean Power Alliance and refresh my memory if you don't mind, but when it came before us previously, what we agreed to, what we, we voted on here as a council was whether or not to submit an application. I don't recall that we ever said we were going to move forward and be part of the Clean Power Alliance. I thought that was a second step, once we found out whether or not they approved our application or not. And, and I'm asking that because I think you used the phrase, if all goes according to plan, then we'll, then you provided a date or approximate date that, and so can you just clarify that for me?
Yeah, sure thing. So, yeah, the council will, will be able to make that determination and, and vote on whether or not, you know, you want to go forward with the process or not. And with that, what will be presented is an ordinance that will have to be adopted. If the council goes forward and decides they want to move forward and, and, and join the Clean Power Alliance, then an ordinance will have to be passed and sent over to the, the California, the Clean Power Alliance so that they can put in the paperwork with the Utilities Commission.
Okay, and will there be an allowance for any community input on this? I'm assuming that on the, at the agenda item when it comes before council again?
Sure.
Anything else? Any other information being passed out to the community about it?
Well, no, I mean, the, the, the way that the, that the public, you know, discourse is, is, you know, set up to occur for this particular item is to have it at a notice public, public hearing. We could, you know, perhaps through social media, you know, invite folks to, to participate and, and make a public comment. So, yeah, we're happy to take any comments that you do have. Send me an email if you have any ideas on, on that.
Yeah, I'm hearing pros and cons both ways on this and I just want to be sure that those that are opposed are not blindsided, you know, after the fact and say, well, I didn't, you know, check the agenda, I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda. So I think we need to do more than just make it available during a public comment session during the council when it comes up on the agenda. My suggestion.
Hmm. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know if perhaps maybe during your comments, council comments, if you've got a recommendation for the rest of the board to vote on, if, if maybe you want to be specific, if you, if you want to give staff specific direction on that. Otherwise, you know, the plan was to bring it back as an item to, to the future city council meeting. And that's it? That wraps up my comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mary. All right, yes, thank you. Okay, at this point in time, we are moving now to close this session and we do have, we do have closed session today. Our conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. The city council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 to confer with legal counsel regarding litigation to which the city is a party. The title of such litigation is as follows. City of Fillmore versus Jacob Cooper et al., case number 562023-00575230-CU-OR-VTA, Ventura County Superior Court. So now we'll adjourn our regular session and move into closed session. Thank you. So now we'll adjourn our regular session and move into closed session. Thank you. Thank you.
(inaudible)[16.00][16.10](end of transcript)[18.00][18.10](end of transcript)[20.00][20.10](end of transcript)[22.00][22.10](end of transcript)[24.00][24.10](end of transcript)[26.00][26.10](end of transcript)[28.00][28.10](end of transcript)[30.00][30.10](end of transcript)[32.00][32.10](end of transcript)[34.00][34.10](end of transcript)[36.00][36.10](end of transcript)[38.00][38.10](end of transcript)[40.00][40.10](end of transcript)[42.00][42.10](end of transcript)[44.00][44.10](end of transcript)[46.00][46.10](end of transcript)[48.00][48.10](end of transcript)[50.00][50.10](end of transcript)[52.00][52.10](end of transcript)[54.00][54.10](end of transcript)[56.00][56.10](end of transcript)[58.00][58.10](end of transcript)[60.00][60.10](end of transcript)[62.00][62.10](end of transcript)
Okay, we are back from closed session. And we, the council met with legal counsel. And there is nothing to report. No reportable action officially. So we are going to adjourn our city council meeting until our next one on Tuesday, September 23 at 6:30 p.m. here in council chambers at City Hall. Thank you. Have a good night.